Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting and would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call being ordered, open roll call.
Goodell?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Hingardt?
Here.
Rusher?
Here.
Hader?
Here.
We need a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 15, 2013 regular council meeting.
Will we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the treasurer's monthly investment report. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And last, we need a motion to approve the claims for July. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Do you have some questions, Joe, on the claims and some of the things?
Yeah.
Maybe we just go run over them just so we kind of...
See, I don't know if I remember. They all got answered pretty well. Repairs on the Ford vehicle, the Ford vehicle that...
Yeah.
Yeah. The main thing there is to support local dealerships and I think, you know, you said that's going to be a policy or has already been a policy of ours to just buy GM Chrysler as long as we've got a local dealership. Not to get on too high a horse and we've got a long meeting ahead, but you know, that's important, that rural communities get supported by the auto companies. Then we had a couple of things, the big costs on the repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. You explained that to, what was it, a couple of pumps sold out?
It's blowers for the aerators, pumps, you know, pumps air down to the bugs so they can work. And blowers just, it was actually going to be on next year's capital projects, but it just went out a year or two soon. So, and they've already been rebuilt several times, so it was a situation where they couldn't be rebuilt again. It was just had to be replaced. So, a cost that we were going to budget for next year, a year earlier. So, it'd be a situation where we'll see if we need to swap out one of the other capital projects to come to within, within reason. The wastewater plant, or wastewater has a decent budget, so it might be a situation where we can just spend that this year and pull back next year and not schedule that capital project because the funds are there.
While we're talking about the 15,000 is probably monthly on the O and M, and how much of that is M? Not much. I mean, because we usually get charged the extra on the maintenance.
Yeah. You know, I think that it's hard to say how much of that is necessarily maintenance without having it directly in front of me. I know the guys do, perfect example, it's split out between water and wastewater, but essentially the staff is somewhat interchangeable. They both work on both sides. They just went through and exercised the valves, about half the valves in town, which makes it so that the, when we need to operate those valves to isolate for breaks or repairs, that they're operational. If they aren't exercised every few years, then they kind of get, they get crusty and get locked into place and then when you need them, you don't have them. So, that was a big improvement. That's something that we've kind of focused on. We'll continue to bring in valve exercisers. You know, it's a machine that just comes over the valve, spins it down, spins it back up, counts how many turns it is, make sure that it's operational. The downside of that is when you don't trust your valves, you don't want to use any machine on it because it'll probably snap them, but then you also don't have any confidence that you can isolate water when you need to. So, a perfect example is we had a break on a valve on Friday during morning and we had to repair it Monday morning. An emergency repair because it had shut off the laundromat, so as soon as we could get the low gates and the equipment to repair it, we got in there and repaired it. But, you know, that's kind of what happens when you use an exerciser on old valves. So, we avoided a lot of the two and four inch valves, exercising those because the high likelihood that we could end up, you know, causing more problems than we really want to cause. But, it is, it is nice to know that you can shut down all the areas that are relatively new, maybe within the last 40 years, those valves are exercised.
And then the animal control, I don't know, I think we've gotten complaints both ways. We spend too much, we don't spend enough, but I think, what was it, 13,000?
That was actually all grant funded. That was 10,000 from the community foundation grant and another three in donations from the surrounding communities, Dakota City, Pioneer, Renwick. They've all donated towards building the pound because they, the county and the city work together on animal control and so that facility will be used.
Is it only going to dump now?
Uh, starting. They're, they're going to pour concrete, I believe tomorrow, or get ready to support it.
Two other questions Joe had on his deal. One was the, how much water has gone through Stonic Pool? And it was like $17,000 worth in one month that we lost. How does that actually get billed out? You know, really just not billed out because the city owns it, so how does it transfer through and stuff anyway?
The general fund pays the water fund for it, so we actually do pay the water bill just like we're paying. We pay it out of the general fund and it goes into the water fund. And that's probably from when they first started filling the pool up to now, that bill is for, so probably a couple months, yeah.
Could we have lost 100,000 a month or at least that we...
Oh, we lost more than...
More than...
More than a day, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were losing, at the height of it, it was about 100,000 a day. And then normally it loses about 7,000 to 15,000 a day just due to evaporation and backwashing, making sure that we're cleaning the water out. So, you lose a significant amount just from that, especially if it's hot, really, evaporation kicks in here. But, yeah, when it was, when it was fluctuating during the break, it was probably about, you know, 50 to 100,000 a day. But they've got it isolated now, so should be, should be a little bit better, but now we have to figure out, we're talking to see if we can slip line it or what solutions exist so that we don't have to tear up the deck to try and replace. Pipes are underneath, but there's probably about three breaks right now, so.
Then that last one was the park or the lot?
Lot, yeah.
That was actually, I was asking about something I kind of pushed for, the money to buy the lot.
Yeah, that was, the city and the county have the 2080 with the Housing Development Corporation for the Eagle Ridge Park. The 30,000 was from a hotel motel to pay for the park and then the county used rent funds to pay for their portion of the park. And that closing happened either last Friday or the Friday before.
Nice article in Humboldt Now about the Indian Trail. That's right in that area. I didn't realize how historic that was. I thought people just called it the Indian Trail because kids went on it. It was an Indian Trail. Who knew?
Any other questions you had to go run?
I think that covered everything, wasn't it, Aaron? And Aaron, thanks for answering that quickly.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Under Communications. Anything in the public in attendance this evening? If not, we'll move on to the public hearing, Drainage District 13A. First off, we need a motion to adjourn the city council meeting at 5:37 PM.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to come to order as Drainage District 13A trustees at 5:38 PM.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, this being the time and place for the scheduled public hearing and the commissioners' reports for Humboldt County Drainage District, I will resume the public hearing at 5:38 PM. Aaron?
I'll leave it to the experts.
Okay. Either one, yep, it'll be fine, yep.
Have there been any additional objections or complaints or any further, anything else in writing been filed regarding this hearing for tonight?
Yes.
Hasn't been filed yet. So we have how many?
Two.
Okay. Can I just take a quick look? And I didn't want to, I didn't really want to come before anybody had a chance to voice their opinions, but I thought if I explained to you the conversations that I've been having with the engineer, it might streamline the issues that we're facing. So, I don't mean to take the time away from anybody else. We had the public hearing at June 3rd on a Monday and we heard a lot of, got a lot of input from landowners, a lot about particular properties. We also had some legal issues that were brought to our attention. And so, Rick and I met with Trish Eli, who is the drainage clerk for the county, and I want to thank Rick and Trish for all the work that they did that day that we met a few weeks ago. And they, we kind of put our heads together and relived what has happened to this area the past three or four years. And I'm kind of an outsider, so I could ask all the dumb questions because I didn't know the answers. So, here's, here's some basic information that is relevant. It was in 2009 that the county as Drainage District 80 started this improvement project. And Rick, correct me if I say anything that's not factually right. And so that improvement project is what we're actually assessing for still today. Is that right, Rick?
That's the majority of it. There's other work that's been done also.
Now, the other, the other next significant thing that happened was in 2012, 2013, there was an annexation around the north edge of 13A. And that was basically, a conclusion was reached that there was ground outside the existing boundary line of the district that was benefiting from the drainage. And so, around that time, approximately 162.8 acres were annexed into the district. And it went through the process of annexation and I wasn't present for it, but it went through the, you know, the hearing process and when it was passed. So, those acres were added to the district. Now, there was, there were some objections to the assessment of this O and I improvement. And some people objected that they hadn't been given notice and that you cannot tax people when they haven't been notified and so forth. And that's what our country stands for. So, the, the direction that I gave to Rick Hopper, the engineer, was that if the improvement was done in 2009 and only so many acres or so many landowners were notified of the project and the project was completed and the cost was 1.25 million dollars and there was a subsequent annexation of another 126 acres, those people, they may be the same people that owned land in the district at the time and had extra land outside that was brought in, so they might have been kind of straddling the line. It's not proper for us to tax those people, and I should say assess, those people that had land that was annexed after the improvement was done. Okay, so for example, if you had 40 acres and 20 acres of it was inside of the district at the time the improvement was done and then in 2012 or 13 you had 20 acres that was brought into the district, we're not going to assess those 20 acres that were not in the district at the time the improvement was done. Only those acres that were in the district. So, Rick does the numbers and what we've talked about doing is revising the assessment so that those 162 acres are not assessed. And Rick, let me know if I misspeak as I go through your numbers. But Rick basically crunched some numbers and this was approximately 1.25 million dollar project. Some of the landowners that had property that were not notified about the, because the improvement was done before the annexation, that would result in 62,347 dollars not being assessed to them. Okay? Of all those people that had acres that were annexed after the fact, we're not going to assess them. That would reduce it by 62,000 dollars. And that is approximately 5% of the total project. Now, what that does is that 5% or that 62,000 has to be assessed against the property owners that were in the district at the time. Because there's a lot of property owners and because the project was large, that results in an increase of 3.29% in general.
Yeah, average increase of 3.29% to the rest of the property owners.
So, Rick gave an example of if a person had an assessment of 650 dollars, that would result in an increase of 21.38 cents. So in other words, if you're a homeowner and 650 was your assessment, it'll go to 671.38. That's just an example. Don't, we have to, they're going to revise the assessment. These are examples. Or if your assessment was 250, it would go to 258. And that, again, that just goes to you can only assess the people that were in the district at the time the improvement was done and the notice was sent out. Okay? So, I instructed him that that has to be done. And we also had a lot of conversations, just informal, about, you know, the comments that we heard about farm ground, city ground and so forth. And Rick has had some difficulty getting the commission together. People have been gone summertime and so forth. They're asking for additional time to go through it again. They'll have to go through it for purposes of taking those people's 162 acres out and they also have the right to reconsider, you know, everything they've done based upon your comments. Now, they may not adopt your comment. They might, they might agree with somebody else's comment. That's up to them. And so, we have looked at September 13th as a date for them to get their revisions to the Board of Trustees, the city council, okay? If that does result in increasing anyone's assessment, we have to have a, another hearing to give them a chance to look at it and object. Because there was notice sent out of the June hearing and there was, the initial assessment was distributed or available. So at that time, if somebody thought, well, my assessment's only going to be 250 dollars, I'm not going to object, I just won't go. If we're going to increase them at all, we've got to send them another notice and say, this is the revised assessment. And I know some people, some people don't like the cost of the assessments, but I think in talking to Trish, that they're trying to crunch everything down to make it as efficient as possible. The bottom, the bottom line is it's got to be legal, so we do have to send that notice out because we don't want anybody to object and throw the whole thing out because they weren't given notice of a possible increase. So, what we're contemplating right now, we're trying to be as open and honest with you as possible, is that I've instructed Rick to go back to the commissioners and take out any, any landowner that was not given notice of the improvements. Now, I've left out another category of properties. My understanding of it is that over the years, maybe properties have been split, you know, over, over 100 years. Properties have been broken down. What might have been a two acres is now one and now is quarters. So, some people were not sent a notice and they're probably going to be very small property, properties. But there are still some of those property people that, that it may be very obvious that since they live in the city and they kind of should know where the district is. Legally, if they weren't sent a notice or if their name wasn't in that published notice, they can't be assessed. So, poor Trish Eli, we asked her to go through and how many name, how many property owners are on this? More than several hundred?
Two to 300.
Two to 300. So she had to go and investigate and if anybody was not given notice of that improvement, you know, the O and I, then they didn't have an opportunity to object to it and they can't be assessed. And that's not going to be a very big number. It's going to be miniscule, isn't it?
That's right.
Dollar wise?
Very small number, dollar wise, because each of those, none of those were paying very much.
Right.
And the final number of those that will not have to pay is getting reduced because some of them got notice that we didn't think did.
Okay.
So, the page summary I saw most recently, fairly big print, one side of a page and a third of the next side of the page, so not too many.
So we're, we're doing that to comply with the code. So, what we're expecting to happen is that the commissioners will meet again, go through everything, and we would expect them to provide us with the revised report. If we convene, reconvene on September 13th, the Board of Trustees, according to the code, does not have to adopt a hook line and sinker, okay? The code says they can increase it, decrease or keep it the same. So, it's still important for you to voice your concerns in a, of course, a civil manner. You can voice your concerns today because you're here and this was set for hearing. We want to hear what you have to say. The written, the written documents have been received and they'll be passed along to the commissioner. But I just wanted you to know what we're already proposing to do, so if you're here about the notice issue, we're addressing that. And if you're in the city and didn't get notice, we're addressing that. And we're asking the commissioners to review everything and file a revised report on the 13th. The trustees can look at it and decide whether they are going to accept it in whole or make any revisions. And it looks like there's going to be an increase to just at least one person. There'd be more. So we'll have to republish it and have another final hearing in later October. So, we're not trying to draw this out. We're trying to make sure it's done perfectly right. So, that's just what we wanted to share with the trustees and kind of give everybody idea where we're going with this.
Two other things we'll be looking at is residential ground versus ag ground. Do we still feel that how we treated both of those was fair? Another thing we'll be looking at is Humboldt Properties versus Dakota City Properties. Do we still feel how we did that was fair? So there's several things involved here that we really want to get back through, including the objections. I've been through the objections. I have not gone through them with the commissioners yet. We will be doing that soon.
If my chances, someone files a suit, you know, and we wind up in court over this, those costs just get tacked on at the end, then we split up amongst all the people and stuff on that? Or how does, how does that ever come to a final as far as, you know, all the monies and stuff, because all that's ongoing costs and stuff then, so?
I don't, I don't know what kind of insurance coverage the city has. But, the conclusion that I think that they would reach is that it would not be covered under any kind of quote errors and omissions coverage. I just don't think a city has that kind of coverage. They do have general liability, so if somebody were injured and it was, it was alleged that it was by the fault of the city, you would be presumably covered for damages that were done to an individual because of any negligence. But if somebody challenged it, you'd have to first consult with the insurance company to see if you have any coverage for it. And if you don't, then it would be a cost of doing business. It would be presumably part of the cost of the district. So, you have a 50 or 50,000 dollar litigation expense, it could very well be part of the cost of doing the district.
But we're, we're doing this as trustees of the Drainage District, not the city council.
Right.
So that would be passed on, I would assume, to the Drainage District.
We're only kind of assuming that because like I said, you'd have to check with, if you had some insurance coverage that did provide for something like that, then it might apply. My guess is that you probably don't. So it would, it would be just like an engineering expense, part of doing the project.
In line with that, we'll be meeting and revising the report. We'll be submitting the report. And then the, you will meet again and set a hearing date. And that date is when you will act on the amended report. And then it's after that, there would be any kind of challenge to it in court.
Okay. And how, how long do they have to challenge that before, before it's paid or up to a certain time?
No, 30 days they have to file an appeal, district court, and then file suit.
We would know in 30 days if something's going to happen or not.
I have a question. When you said, "Rich, the notice, will it be in your paper?" Or when you say, "Send out written notices"?
You do, on certain types of hearings, you have to do both. You have to publish and you have to mail. And if there is a proposed increase in the assessments, that'll be done. Did I answer your question?
For moment.
Mailed and in the, mailed and published.
Okay, if there's any change, okay.
If there's an increase.
Because you just made in a general comment that it would be, that it would be looked at again and that it would be sent. So I'm assuming everybody within the district will get the notice.
Yes, yeah. It would actually be, I think, easier just to send out the mess instead of having to go through the time of picking and choosing, picking and choosing. It would probably increase the cost if you just picked out anyway that might have the increase, so it'd probably just be to everybody.
So then after they receive those notices, then you have how many days before you do a written complaint?
The rule is that if they approve something, they have to set up for hearing no sooner than 40 days into the future. And then the notice has to be published and mailed 20 days prior to that hearing. So they're kind of, in a way, they're given 20 days to get everything put together and mailed out. And then you get the 20 days published notice and the 20 days mailed notice. And it's also announced at the meeting so that it's no mystery as to when the hearing will be. It's, it's, normally it's announced, the date is. So, in a way, you get more than 40 days notice if you're attending the meetings or if you're reading the minutes.
I have a question, Joe. When did, I have a series of questions. When did the city and the county decide that they're going to do this joint thing? You know, with 80 and 13A would have been...
I can answer that for you.
Okay.
That's one of the things that we asked Trish Eli to go through with the minutes and the records of every one of these districts. And what she, what she dug out was a resolution of the Board of Supervisors acting as trustees in the matter of Drainage District 13A on November 6th, 1973. Getting to the resolution portion, it says it's resolved that District 13A is transferred to the City of Humboldt effective December 7th, 1973. And that this resolution shall be certified to the city council of the City of Humboldt and shall be spread upon the records of the Drainage District.
Mr., Mr., spoke, when did they decide to do the, that 13A was going to be assessed for the work in 80? Is that 2009 or 2008?
2008, I believe, because that is when there was a petition to do an improvement in 80. And then the preliminary engineering report recommended that the 104 acres in the north part of 80 be redirected so it didn't go into 13A. And by benefiting 13A from that project, that's when that decision was made.
Like 2080, really, or?
No, it was not really. There's, the city has 13A and the county has 80.
And that project was bid at 416,888 dollars, not 1.25 million?
True. That, that was the bid. There'd be the reports, other engineering. There was 180 some thousand with the city on bills on 13A. City did an improvement on 13A where they bypassed a portion of the tile and took the water to the open ditch. I mean, there's a lot of different projects involved here to add that all up. Now, we are in the, currently reviewing the city expenses. It appears from the list I have that I may have included some expenses that the city had again after Gloria gave me a total. So we're reviewing all of that to get all that in order. And they have, the city and the county have prepared documents for all the invoices that, that were cost to the district. So, I was just at the county this afternoon. They had pulled the last of it together. I don't know if they're going to do it tomorrow, but they are going to make copies of everything that they're sending out, including invoices, original petition, hearing note, minutes, all of those things. So, these invoices will all be reviewed. The 1.25 million could change. I believe if anything, it will go down a little. But, the only bills you pay are the ones you have. The sheet that I have that has 1.25 million doesn't carry any weight. It's the actual bills. And that has all been reviewed, has not all been sent out yet, but will be within the next few days.
We do have copies of all the invoices here in a sheet. You know, if someone wants them, they're twenty-one dollars, you know, for all the copies and stuff. If you want to come down to city hall and just look at them, you know, you're more welcome to do that at no charge. Just can't take them, of course, but you could just briefly look at them and stuff here at no charge. But if you do want copies, they're available. We do have stuff printed up already. So that is available to the public anyway.
Um, when did the people that are going to be assessed, when were they notified, uh, of the DDA improvement?
Uh, right, as soon as the original preliminary engineering report was submitted, there was a notice. And I was in the office this afternoon of the drainage clerk when she copied the notice. There's like four pages of names alone. Um, and all that.
Was mailed out or?
Yeah, that was mailed and published. And she copied the affidavit of publication for when it was published and the actual publication. And then the minutes, I believe, of the meeting, accepting the report and setting the hearing date. So this was all done as part of that original preliminary engineering report.
Was everybody that's being assessed now, were they notified?
Everybody but the ones, David, except what Davis mentioned here, the ones that.
Subdivision stuff.
Yes, subdivision and the, the agricultural ground north of town. The acres that were annexed later, um, they're, they're not being assessed now. Uh.
Was the ag ground people notified from DDA?
Anybody who's going to pay an assessment.